We are going to declare. And basically, we have one item to discuss today, which is that spring celebration. But we have all the aspects of that spring celebration to discuss. Advertising is going to be maybe the first thing. And Sarah, you have already printed up a whole bunch of flyers for us, right?
Yes, I have flyers ready to go. I it's all set up not only to be posted anywhere, but also if you want to like email to your listserv or other groups that the link is, you just need to click on it to register so we can start keeping track of that. As soon as I get the okay, I'll make the event on the Facebook page and then I'll push it to Woodstock Proud and all the other wonderful groups there. And then I think we can just start going, at least for free advertising, start pushing it out.
Fantastic. So how many flyers do you have?
I made fifty copies, but I'm sure I can make more if needed.
And that Woodsack Academy let you do that for free, right?
Yep, I went down to tech and I said, how much would it cost? And they said, how many? I said fifty, they're like, I just go do it on your account. So it's on my name, which is fine because we haven't been at school.
Okay, fantastic. That's terrific. So brainstorm group, where should we post them?
Hey Elaine.
Hello, how's everybody doing? Hello. Sorry, I'm a little late. I ended up over my friend's house. We're leaving at 3:00 AM.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah. Philippa, can we ask, I don't know how much time either Erin or Elaine has.
Well, not very much because I'm at my friend's house right now. So I just dropped out of dinner and just to hop on and see what's going on.
Well, let's let's ask you to sort of give us your ideas first. I'm Philippa Paquette, you know Andy, Jesse White, pale blue shirt on. Erin, I can't see at the moment, so picture is something.
Okay.
Okay, Erin Burke.
I see Erin.
Guy. And Sarah Zidzik is on the phone, but she live with the committee and has been handling some of the publicity. So let's switch off publicity for a minute and then go to you Elaine, since you've got the shortest amount of time. What do you need? How do you envision what you're going to be doing at the Arboretum?
Well, there are a couple of options. Yeah, there are a couple of options, Philippa. Andy and I had initially talked about having plein air artists from the Art Guild, simply painting in the yard and maybe having people paint a little with them. But after I began doing some murals and installations, I realized what an extraordinary community project, an art installation in the Palmer Arboretum could be. And what these things look like is they're set up on posts, so they sink a couple of.
I've lost you.
Yeah, someone was calling me. I just hung up on them. No problem. They sink a couple of posts and then just put some outdoor wood across, something like Mariner's Board or something that is impervious to the weather. So set up a panel for us and we use a fabric that is also impervious to weather and rotting. And what we do is we staple the fabric up there. So it might be a six by eight area. And my artists would create a design that would mesh with the natural environment of the Palmer Arboretum. So it can be nature, it could be specimens, it could be a little piece of history, something about the Palmer Arboretum or what connects connects people to it. And so it becomes a wonderful community project. So as people come in, this design is already mapped out. It has color coding, so people can simply come in and paint a portion of it. And it becomes just an amazing permanent installation. They're they're not free to do, but it's one of those things that's not difficult to find funding because it's such a tangible visual. If a bank were to sponsor it, their name is on it, sponsored in full by or in part by, you know, Jewett City. They love those kind of projects.
Elaine, would this
So that was kind of my thought.
Would this be in addition to setting up easels?
No, it would be in lieu of it because the the community project, there would be artists that would be overseeing this project because it's a big one. If you have a six or eight foot span of insulation, you need to have someone oversee it because they're going to be cleaning up the mess, finishing off the edges, making sure people have direction. It would be a big coordinated effort. There would probably have to be four artists just overseeing that one project.
Now, is this something that could be done and not be permanent on that day? Because I don't know how we could turn it around that quickly.
Yep, you could do a temporary setup. It would have to be very stable, though. It would still have to have some kind of footing because something like that can be blown over. Someone could get hurt. So definitely have to have something driven into the ground that would be a secure spot. But you could do it temporarily and then have it placed elsewhere. In another, if you had someplace, if you wanted to put it inside or if a business like the Woodstock Inn wanted to put it in their lobby, you know, it could definitely go to another place.
I love the sound of it. What do you, what does anybody else think? I mentioned it last time, but we didn't discuss it.
Yeah, you were going to go and get some more information about it, right, Andy?
Yep, that's why Elaine's here.
Oh, I see, okay.
She's the one, and then she has an artist who who does that, a muralist. I'm I'm not involved in that part.
Elaine, do you have any idea what the cost would be for somebody to sponsor this?
To sponsor it, well, the average cost of a mural is about $50 a square foot. And so we go by the size. It depends on the size. So that's having a professional designer, professional muralist, the execution of it and the finishing of it, start to finish, and it's impervious to weather. We also put an anti-graffiti finish on it so it can't be damaged. Yeah, there's a lot that goes into these. So yeah, it's $50 a square foot. So that's what we base it on in general. And you can do the math from there. How big do you want it? If you want something smaller or something larger. These kind of installations are very popular amongst gardens because they are a place of focus and they draw people there, especially people that have been involved in the creation of it. You know, a small child and their family or a school group, they say, we we were part of that creation. And it draws more, if you want to draw more attention to it, it's good for that.
I like it. Do you think we need permission from the town?
I think that we would have to, depending on where it is put, Andy, I'm assuming that the historical hill, am I right, Jessie? The hill is going to want to know about this.
I would think so, or at least, yeah, I would think so. But but I don't know for sure, but I would, we could find out.
Oh, yes, I'm sure.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Down in the Arboretum, it's the same, Jessie?
You know, I I'm guessing, but I don't, I honestly don't know that for sure. I'm just guessing, yeah.
Yeah, in working with other towns, there are regulations within each town. When we worked in one town, lettering could only be so big. They had to see a sketch first to make sure it's appropriate content. Of course, this would be done as a group. Everybody would have, all of you would have input into, you know, what would make this meaningful for you? What art, what history would you like included? Are there characters that you'd like included in there? You know, would you like us to make it look like part of the garden?
That would be fun if we could put. God, I'm drawing a blank on her name.
Minnie Palmer.
Minnie Palmer.
It would be cool.
In that big dress that we have the picture?
Oh, man.
So let's skip to Erin. For Erin, do you have to go?
No, I can stay for.
Oh, there she is.
Oh, my. We could have some fun with her.
Yeah.
We could even do it in a folks, yeah, do it in a folks style, like a primitive. You know, there's just so many ways to tell a story. And the simpler, the better if you're having amateurs working on it so that they can do the dress. Someone can come and do the dress. We'd come in and do the shading, you know, block it out so that people can be part of the creation of it.
And Erin, you could paint the birds.
Yeah, that'd be awesome.
I wonder if we have enough time for something.
Yeah, that's a good question. Do we have time for the planning and execution? This is two months away. And the decision would have to, decisions are not quick going through a town. It's taken sometimes several weeks for all the parties involved to 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 take a look at it. And if we have to come up with a drawing, I do have an artist who can work on that for us. I'm going to be away for three weeks, so I would put that in motion to have a quick artist rendition with your input. So it would probably require another meeting such as this. And sometimes you could just put some feelers out. Is speak to the town council. What's the process? What are the regulations? Is there anything in writing about these sort of things? And that gives you an idea of how complicated is it going to be? If it takes one month to get approval, we would probably have to draw something up within the next two weeks. So I would have to check with my muralist to see if she is available to do something that quickly.
So Elaine, let me ask you, if this doesn't pan out for one reason or another, which it might not, you know, with the town and the historical society and all the hoops that people have to jump through, is there a plan B? Could we go back to setting up the easels?
Oh, yes. I did have, I had plenty of artists who would be willing to just paint and have people look over their shoulder and talk about the process of creating a beautiful piece of artwork. Yeah, I didn't get a lot of interest in having a participatory station. So that might be something that I would, I'm comfortable doing it, but a lot of artists are not happy having other people touching their art things or, you know, playing with their brushes. I don't know.
I get that, but I'm just concerned that if we can't pull it, if we don't have an answer in a month, we'll we'll have to go to Plan B.
We'll pull it together.
I don't think we'll have an answer in a month. We can't even get a meeting with Jay Swan.
Yeah, I know.
I think that this is a great long term plan, maybe something for next year's event. But I think the first time without going through all the hoops, maybe bring it up with Jay Swan if we ever get a meeting and then we can start planning. I think it's a great idea. I just don't think it's feasible in the time frame.
Yeah, I agree with, yeah.
I'm wondering, because Elaine, Philippa's trying to get a meeting with the first selectmen because we want to ask him some questions and we can't get a meeting, so.
It's frustrating, I know. Yeah.
When does the historical society meet? I just, I don't know because I'm not on that committee, but we can find out.
Yeah, I just wondered how often they met. Okay. So I'm sorry, I had to go off and quick tick check that I was walking up my back.
Oh, we had, we had tips on us yesterday.
Yeah. So do we have a plan B, Elaine?
Yes, we can go ahead and I've already put it out to my artists and I had several people respond. So I have at least four people in mind that said they would come and paint on that day. So let's keep that in place. And then if by chance we get a Hail Mary out there, then we can. But it is a wonderful project to do during the summer, during the fall. It can be done at any time and coordinated with another event.
I love the idea.
I think I think it has tremendous potential, very exciting like that at the arboretum, but it may just the planning and all the hoops may be too many.
It's a lot.
Short window, yeah.
You know what might might be interesting is when we put out a fund, the fundraising letter to raise funds to have one of the rewards for a donation to help paint the mural. You know, have a date at some point. That would that would be fun. Have donors painting it.
Yeah.
It would be, yeah.
Yeah, many creative ways. And when it comes to art installations, we have no lack of people that support the arts. There are many people that would love to get their name on that.
Great.
Be part of it. Yeah, so if there's anything else I can help. I hope, I hope eventually we will. And, you know, I always say sometimes it's it's better to ask for forgiveness than permission. I have
That's true.
But when it comes to the towns, that's not the case. There's a lot of politics involved, but, you know, as a nonprofit organization, we're just happy to, in any way we can partner with Woodstock, you know, to paint on a wall or or in any way to beautify an area that's been blighted. We're always happy to to bring our art to the community.
You're awesome, Elaine.
Thank you, Andy.
Yeah, thank you very much, Elaine. I really appreciate that.
Safe travels.
Nice to meet everybody. Well, thank you very much for the time.
Yeah. Philippa, there's a couple of comments. Did anybody read that chat?
I have to, I have to take my dog out. I'll be right back.
Okay, fourth Wednesday of the month. When is that? Oh, that was yesterday.
And they're in the middle of union negotiations.
Right, but the historic district met yesterday. So we missed their meeting. And Jay is still planning to meet with us. Great. That's good. Not going to help us. I think that we were still told it was several weeks before we could meet, so it's going to be a problem. Erin, over to Birdman.
All right.
All right, I'm gonna see you later. Bye bye.
Thanks a lot. Have a safe trip.
Bye now, thank you.
Okay, Erin, what is your vision?
All right, so when Andy talked to me about having, planning a bird walk, he said it was going to be in the afternoon from around one to four. I kind of had in mind like a beginner's, like an introduction to birding because my idea is that people who come to the Arboretum will know some birds, but might not know, you know, easier ways on how to find them or how to spot them or, you know, their sounds and things like that. So I was just planning on having it being like an introduction to bird watching, you know, answer any questions people have, take them out on on the property and and we'll try to find as many birds as possible. I'll have my camera and binoculars and, you know, if if people are interested in that, I can talk to them about that or, you know, try to, you know, show them pictures and stuff I'm able to find. And I'll have my my collar so so we can try to get the birds closer to us. So, you know, everybody can get good looks at these these birds, so.
Okay, so in in I like things organized. Andy was sort of more free floating, like everybody's going to kind of just wander around and the Birdman will be there. Are you thinking that you might take some walks so that like at one and three you would do bird walking? Or it's one, two, I mean, or would you just be down there and people will just stop by and then leave you and go away? Or what is your thought?
It'd probably be easiest, I think, if I go out like in, you know, if people come and they want to be a part of the group, we would go out as a group and, you know, walk along, you know, the different areas of the property because we'll still hear birds at that time. But I think if I were to be standing in one place, you know, calling the birds in it, like they would get smart and they wouldn't come in as easier the next time. So I think it would be better if, you know, I travel different parts of the the property.
Okay. So we we need, then I think we need to sort of set up some scheduling, like there'll be a tree walk at such and such a time, there'll be a bird walk at such and such a time. So again, you don't like that, Andy? You want everybody just to float around, I know.
I know, I don't. I don't, but I'm one person.
Well, that's okay. I just see people, you know, you're trying to listen for birds and a group come in who aren't interested in birds, but they're chattering all about trees or they're talking all about something else. And that's going to be disruptive to Erin. I'm trying to get a sense of how we control the flow of people here.
I actually haven't been to the Arboretum yet, so I could actually take a a trip down there and see, you know, what would be the best way for me to kind of, you know, different habitats and stuff to check out and the trails and things like that to see what would be best for me. Because, you know, I could plan out a loop, you know.
Because I think, Erin, you haven't been there, but as you go down through the Arboretum where most of the trees and flowering bushes are down in the bottom where the water is and where all the winged eonimus is out beyond our property is where the birds are.
Okay.
So I could see you kind of hanging out down in that area and not up in the area that's more manicured.
Okay.
Yeah. I just don't know how we can schedule times because you know what it's like going up and down that hill. See, it's real steep, Erin. You know, to go up and down more than a few times is
So if you want to just like have me stationed down there and say, if anybody's interested in seeing some birds, head down there and I can just kind of, you know, walk this little section down.
I think if you, do you have time to go over there? I can meet you at some point. I can meet you anytime. And we can get down and check it out. And I think you'll get a better understanding for what's going to work. You know, along the edges, Philippa, down the bottom and up the edges. That's where he's going to hear, I mean, that's where we hear the birds. So that's where, and Erin, Erin hears everything. So it's not going to be, it's not like me for sure.
But that also is somewhat separate, that that whole area from where anybody who's going to see the wild, you know, the wildflower garden or is going to see the daylilies or is going to see the daffodils or is going to see the rain garden or is going to see the trees. That would work.
Yeah, well, true. If we had some kind of a printed, I don't even know what you would call it, something to hand to people with locations of where people are going to be if they're interested in, like, let's say, just to use me as an example, I'm doing Linda's Wildflower Garden. You know, that's just, they can go there.
Right.
And we'll have to be directing people. I'm hoping some of the garden club people will be there to help just kind of direct people or answer questions. Because I don't imagine anybody's going to come and stay a long time. They're going to cruise through.
And I I think we can look for the Lions Club to volunteer also. I'm hoping that they've they've offered to volunteer, so I'm hoping that some of them will come too.
Oh, that'd be nice, even if they just come.
You know? They volunteer to help us out as part of their community service. So requirements, that would be very nice. So if 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 we were in in that, if you had that kind of an area, Erin, that would probably work really well for you, wouldn't it?
Oh, yeah.
Your caller maybe once every half hour or something or in different areas so that it doesn't get overused?
Yeah, and I can gauge the amount of people and the different people that are kind of coming and going to see like, all right, you know, new group of people, I'll try to call her one more time, that kind of thing, yeah.
Okay, fantastic. If you could be that flexible, that's terrific.
Yeah.
When you and Andy are there, maybe you could see, we don't currently have any bird feeders up there now, but we were thinking if maybe we were going to put some suet out. But if you found like a good location, you thought it would be helpful, we could, you know, we could do that.
Yeah, that'd be great.
But one of the things we're going to do that day, and this will come up, I made some notes, is we're going to be making bird feeders out of one gallon milk jugs. And maybe we can make some in advance and hang them. You know, not that the birds are necessarily going to come to them, but it might be a good draw to get them coming, to get them in. But it will also be a good example for people, for kids to see if they want to make them.
Good idea, Andy. Yep.
So that's that's another possibility. But Erin, we can talk and, you know, anytime after Easter, I can meet you there anytime and we'll walk through.
Yeah, that'd be awesome.
Okay, maybe we'll see our first warblers down there.
Yeah, hopefully, soon enough.
All right.
Any other questions, Erin?
I don't think so. I'll I'll meet up with Andy sometime and I'll get a good lay of the land there and then we'll, you know, we'll get going. I'm all prepared to be there the 22nd.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Okay.
Thanks, Erin.
Yep, have a good night.
You too. Thanks.
Bye.
Okay. Back to publicity and Sarah.
Yeah, thanks for letting me jump in. Thanks for letting
I have another, I have another meeting to go to in the four minutes.
Okay, how quick?
And I'll pop back into this meeting when I, when that meeting's over.
Okay, we we have about another 35 minutes of this meeting. I think we have an hour. I'm not sure if Crystal can give us longer than that. If she can hear me and can give me a second.
This is, this is Crystal. Yes, I can go longer as needed.
Oh, wonderful. Thank you so much, Crystal, and thank you.
You're welcome. Also, next week, I looked at our, my calendar and Jay's calendar. Next week's packed with Board of Selectmen meeting and and other things going on. But I will see if I can get a meeting with you, with him the following week, okay?
That would be wonderful. Wow, really wonderful, Crystal. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay, so we've got these flyers.
I could put some in the mailboxes on my streets, you know, and I can put like a little note on it, you know, encouraging people to come just, you know, we probably don't want to do that for everything, but since they're on the hill, I can put, you know, some flyers in, you know, the mailboxes there if you guys think that's a good idea.
That's a great idea. How about asking Sweet Evs to have, to keep some there? Because they have communities, so they have like a community notice board that they put.
Right. Yeah.
You know, another thought I had, I might have mentioned this last time. I was down at Roslyn Park by the playground on a sunny day, you know, like today. And there were so many young moms and dads there with their kids. I thought if they'll let us put one up there, they have, I'll ask them, they might. But I thought even if we hand them out to some people, they'll tell their friends about it. And that would be another good way. But then when Sarah puts it on Facebook Proud or, you know, Woodstock Proud, everybody will see it.
Yeah.
We could also send some down to the elementary and middle school.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, post it.
Post it there, yeah.
And how about other towns? Like Pomfret Library, would, do people actually go into the libraries at all or or is it outdoor stuff?
Yeah, I don't know if anyone's really going in there now. I mean, I haven't, you know, it's just, but that's that's the tricky thing. I think we want it where people are going to see, go into places.
Post offices. Do people go into the
Yeah, definitely, we could do the post office.
Yeah. But my little library, people are going, I don't know if they're having the story hour for the kids, but, you know, plenty of people go in there. The little one over here at West Woodstock.
Put something in West Woodstock Library? Okay, the library, okay.
In the May, you want to put them in, you know, in the May Library as well?
Sure.
Yeah, she said
Sarah gone.
She just said she'll do anything, so we can just pass everything on to Sarah.
Good.
She's busy, she's a lot going on.
All right, so I have a couple of questions that I don't want to forget to ask.
About publicity.
Yes.
Okay.
Before, I'd be more than willing to
Okay, sorry, go ahead.
I'd be more than willing to have a banner made that says celebrates spring with the date to put in front of the building. I think we need to get that up a couple of weeks before.
Absolutely, that was on my list. Do you know where to go and get that done?
I was going to try Vista Print, you know, online. I know that the place in, when I had those signs made, you know, the Arboretum signs at Chase Graphics, they were, they were expensive. Now, I don't know if they do a less expensive type of banner, but I can certainly ask them.
Yeah.
But Vista Print, you can get anything now.
Will you get it in time, though?
Yeah, that's a quick, that's a quick turnaround.
Okay.
Will you take care of that, Andy?
I will.
Okay, and I think we have enough money in our budget to cover it, so that should not be your expense.
All right, and then one other thing is
So we spend all our money before June, right, Jessie?
Oh, that's true. Oh, then I'll go to Chase and get one for a couple thousand.
And one we can use every year, yeah.
I think another thing, and this does sort of have to do with publicity, is Sarah's gone, right? Because Linda needs to have a copy of that flyer and it will go in the garden club newsletter.
Okay.
Like ASAP.
Yeah, she sent us a copy, so Sarah did, so you could probably just use that one.
Oh, you think that that would, that would be a good one? And the other thing is we also need to come up with three work dates so it can go in the newsletter that's coming out soon. Maybe the first of April.
Okay.
So So.
What work dates? Again, now Sarah is not part of this discussion at the moment, but I'm, you know. Getting a work date with the Academy students, we need to ask her.
Yes.
They full fully in and which day is a good day.
Well, it's it's funny, I I mentioned how about Saturdays and they all said, no, don't do it on a Saturday, do it on weekdays. So I said, oh, okay, you know, it doesn't matter to me. I guess people who. For the most part, Jessie, in the Garden Club, people are retired.
Yeah.
You know, so that's why. Wednesdays, Wednesdays are good, so.
Well, I I know for the Academy that, you know, they're starting to count them come back, um, you know, in April more each each week. Each week in April is different, they're adding more. Um, but I know Wednesday is a day when they're still e-learning, but they end a little earlier. So I think it would determine, depend on what Sarah's schedule is. You know, is it easier for her to get students when they're already on campus or is it easier to get? You know, students on camp, you know, when she has, when it works for her schedule.
Right.
So, um, I know.
I could throw out two Wednesdays that we could set up anyhow that could go on to the Garden Club.
Okay.
Calendar, and then we can have another date if we needed to.
Because maybe the Lions Club would come also.
Right.
I mean, so these need to be independent. This is strictly to go into the, I mean, maybe we can piggyback, but we need to get something into their, the their newsletter.
How about May the fifth and May the nineteenth?
Oh, you're all, oh, you're all the way into May.
So Wednesdays are, I can't, um, I won't be able to be there because I work, so at, you know, until about two fifteen on Wednesdays.
Mm-hmm.
But that's, um, that's the only, you know, Wednesdays, because I have, because I work, I won't be able to help.
But Philippa, can we have one the end of April, just in case the nineteenth was a rainout?
Sure.
I mean, because that's right before the event, and I think that would be.
Well, I was, I was putting one right before the event, just because we want to make, so everything's immaculate before the event, right?
Yeah, I'm almost thinking that might be up to us to do that, you know, and get the heavy work done ahead of that.
Yeah, so do you want to try something at the end of April?
Yeah, let's, let's get one.
Twenty-eight?
Sure.
And what sort of time are we looking at, a morning or afternoon?
I say morning.
Okay.
Like.
Yeah, Sarah I know has has class, because Noah's in one of her classes, so she, you know, she probably won't. I don't know when she'll be done with class, but I know she has classes in the morning.
You know what, Jessie, we could even have, if she could bring the Academy kids on a Wednesday, that that could be the same day. See, she needs to set her dates independently.
Yeah, right.
From us.
Yeah, okay.
So what do you, what do you think, Philippa? Those Garden Club ladies, if they're gonna come, they'll come in the morning. We've had them there mornings.
What do you think about ten to twelve?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, let's do ten to twelve on the twenty-eighth.
Okay.
And and we'll put that out to the Lions Club and the Garden Club.
Oh, good, okay.
And then maybe Sarah can come in the afternoon. And might might come on a Wednesday or might choose a day when they're in school, like a Friday or a Thursday, or, you know, depending on what's schedules are, like that.
So you still want to do the fifth and the nineteenth of May also and see who we can get?
I think so. I just think I'm concerned about, you know, what what's, what's gonna be done. We also, I told, um. But about the mowing, that we need to have it, we're having it every other week, you know, bi-weekly.
And it needs to be that week.
For the twenty-second.
Yeah, because we might be able to get the Lions Club to come on a Saturday.
Mm-hmm. So do you want, do you want to set up a Saturday, like the eighth?
Sure. Now, do you have, do you have the contact person for the Lions?
Yes, I do.
If they were able to come on the eighth or any of those other dates?
I'll I'll contact them, yeah. I, the the president of the Lions Club contacted me and volunteered their services, Mark Moses.
That's so awesome. So we really need to jump on that.
So what time on Saturday, the eighth? One another ten to twelve?
Sure.
Nine to twelve?
Yeah, no, you know, I like early, I'm up. I mean, in, it's not gonna matter so much then, but in the summer, you know, when it's hot, it's nice to get get down there early.
Right. Okay, so and then on the nineteenth, maybe?
Yep.
What time?
Same thing, ten to twelve. And then when, if Sarah gets back into the meeting, we'll ask her and then she can come in the afternoon.
Um, the other thing I'm not sure about is whether um, anybody at the Academy did any kind of paintings. You know, we have the the flyers, but we had talked about having an art class do a do a painting for us.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I don't know if that happened or not, so I'll have to wait till Sarah comes back in. Um, but you're gonna take care of the banner. Jessie, you'll take, get some flyers from Sarah and do mailboxes on the hill. Will you do Sweet Evs as well? Okay, and the post office there? Great, and we'll get some.
I'll I'll do the other post office up across from my church, East Woodstock.
Okay, great, okay.
I'll do that one. And then Sarah can tell us where we're going to get them or how to get them.
Right, that, she lives somewhere around the Academy, doesn't she?
I think she, I I might, why do I think she lives in Cornfield? Or am I thinking of someone else on Roslin Park?
I don't know.
I don't know. I don't know. I just had that idea.
You may.
I don't know. Uh, but I thought she, but I, she doesn't have to ride around to us, you know, I can. She can put them on her porch, I.
Yeah, we can stop and look them up. Um, so I will communicate with the LGV too, now that we have all the information. And what I need to know from, need to understand from Sarah is is how I put in that connection, that link. That she has created for people to to register at if they want to register. And do we want to post a phone, somebody's phone number? Is anybody willing to be called? I see a no from Andy, I see a nothing from Jessie.
I don't know. Do you feel like getting a lot of phone calls? I don't.
But but I know that that, that when we, when we were listed in the LGV before, um, Jean got calls. Because people do call, so they like to get a response from somewhere.
I know.
I don't know if that website that Sarah has set up or that that thing. If somebody, if somebody texts that site. Can she respond to them? You know, I'm so technologically helpless.
Me too, and I just, I'm not like young people. I hardly ever have my phone with me, you know, I check it.
But anyhow, I'll I'll check with her about that, but I'll get that information into LGV. Do we want to do Winnie Radio?
Oh, yeah. I elect you, Philippa, to go down at six AM.
Oh, gee. I don't second that.
Go meet with Gary O.
I suggest we both go down at six AM.
Oh.
About that.
I mean, I get up early, but do I want to do that?
Well, let me, let me, let me check and see if we can get on, because I think it's, I think it would be good. I think I would get, that would reach a lot of other people.
Jessie, you're muted.
Oh, sure, Jessie.
I'm sorry about that.
See, that's how she gets out of things.
Um, I'm sort of assuming that with your teaching schedule, you will not be available to go on Winnie, am I right, Jessie? Okay, and at the name.
You know, I I start teaching at six AM.
That's what I'm, yeah, sure, in China, right?
You you do, right, with international students? Yeah, that's what I thought. Noah mentioned that, yeah.
Yeah, and and I think Sarah probably is is pretty tied up, but we can check with her. But I will, I will ask Gary O and it will be you and me.
Oh, God, great.
Andy, alrighty.
Yeah. I have a, I have another question. I, you can tell I made a list.
Is it publicity?
Good.
Yeah, sort of.
We're gonna go go on to other things in just a minute.
Oh, okay, then I'll wait.
Okay, next thing we need to think about is what supplies do we need? My thinking is we should have a couple of tables.
Mm-hmm.
Um, because they're gonna be needing the materials to make the bird feeders. Um, I've got pine cones. I managed to find about twenty-four pine cones. So if anybody sees those bigger pine cones.
Mm-hmm.
I'll bring it, I'll buy a big jar of peanut butter and.
I I thought we weren't gonna do peanut butter.
Yeah, we, because of the allergies, yeah.
Oh, that's right.
But there's other kinds that you can, you know, buy soy butter. Uh, which people don't have allergies to.
Or we could use bacon fat.
We'll track all kinds of animals left leftover.
I don't know, do birds like soy butter?
Well, I think it's just to stick the bird seed, right?
Yeah.
So I don't think the birds are really eating the bir, you know, the peanut butter, it's just to.
We talked about that, and then we went to the bird feeders and if you guys Google. How to make a bird feeder out of a milk jug, you'll see all kinds of things, and some of them are painted. You know, where kids could have not watercolors, but you know, the tempera paint and.
Right.
And then all of them have a dowel. You know, there's a hole cut out, so we'll, of course, we'll need someone to do that. And then a dowel goes through and then a little bird seed in the bottom, and they're they're really cute, and then a.
Yeah.
String around the top. I mean, take, take a look and then. We can, I mean, even I can do, I mean, that's something I would enjoy doing.
Yeah, I can do that, too. I've done those kinds of things before, so.
Are you gonna be able to come that day, Jess?
That's, yeah, that's right, I can't, but I can get the materials for it if you want.
Okay, are you saving, are you saving milk jugs? I know, Philippa, you were.
I am, yeah.
I have four.
Keep on saying, so, I mean, again, if, do we have a sense of how many we should save, like?
As many, as many as we can between now and then.
Yeah.
So, so the table then, those would be at least one table for kid supplies.
Yeah, probably, we probably need two tables for that, so kids can spread out too, so we have to think about that.
I just purchased a six-foot folding table at Lowe's, because I need it for Easter, so I'll bring my table.
Okay, and I will bring two tables and I have some folding chairs, so I'll put some folding chairs, if if Garden Club people or. Somebody wants to help, but they don't want to have to walk down and do Garden Club stuff, they could run those activities.
Yeah, we might have someone who who would like to do that and, you know, stay up top.
Um, I think.
Now, my other question was, Jessie, it sort of to you. I wa, I want to make the sheets for the scavenger hunt, and I know last time, Philippa, you just showed those, um. Laminated things, but I want to make it specific to the arboretum.
Okay.
You know, like things like a frog, things that they have a pretty good chance of finding. I love those sheets with the wildflowers and the birds, but I thought if, you know, if we put a cardinal. You know, acorn, things that the kids are going to find, birdhouse, and I've been thinking about different things. Making the squares about the size of the squares on the screen right now. Either laminated or not, if the town hall would laminate them for us.
Crystal was wonderful. She just laminated a whole bunch, you know how we lost a lot?
Guides?
She laminated a whole bunch of those for me, so I think she would be willing to. Um, I don't know if she's still on.
And then they, then they could be used over, but if we didn't get them laminated, the child could have their own sheet. And take it home with them.
Right.
I'm happy to laminate if you'd like me to.
Okay, thank you, Crystal.
Oh, you are still there, good.
Excellent, thank you so much. I I like the idea of them taking it home, actually.
I kind of do, too.
I think that's kind of a a learning experience, too.
If we had pencils, they could check it off themselves. Maybe we'll do some of each.
Mm-hmm, okay. Um, maybe there's, there's some kind of a, of a prize that they get if they get a bingo or something.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, they get to make a bird feeder.
No, they get a bird sticker or they get a a stamp, a stamp on their hand. Kids love stamps on their hands.
Yeah, we could do that.
Yeah, you know what? I have some stamps.
Okay.
My kids use, grandkids, the with the pad and the little, I'll have to see what I've got in there.
Okay.
I think some of the cards have, that you could look, some of the cards that I gave to Philippa, they have, you know. A variety of things on them, because I used to do it at Trailwood, and so there are some.
Oh, oh, okay. Did you do that for the Audubon?
I did, for the Trailwood, yep, so there's some things that like, I I don't have them in front of me, but there might be some. You know, you could use both if you wanted.
You know what, Andy? Why don't I get the box to you?
Okay.
Okay, um.
Why don't we, why don't we meet up? Why don't we meet up, um, somehow with Sarah and get the flyers and make that exchange?
Okay, sounds good.
All right.
Good, okay.
Can they, can they be cut, Jessie, or no?
Oh, yeah, you can, you can cut them, um, you know, you can do what you you want with them.
Are they laminated?
They are laminated, but not all of them.
Oh, okay, because I don't want to destroy them, but I thought if you were getting rid of them, I could use those as a.
Source, like a, yeah, I think there's enough that you would, you could experiment with some and leave some of the others, yeah.
Okay, and I'll make a whole bunch of those. You know, a whole bunch of the printed ones.
Okay, I'm putting Andy down for that, okay. Um, other things that I think we need for supplies, we need a couple of garbage bins with black plastic bags if people are picnicking. Um, we need to have the one at each each exit entrance so that they can dump their stuff there. Um. We may need some signs that say in and out. What's that?
Yeah, do we have, is picnic on the flyer?
Yes. It says, bring your own picnic, yeah.
Good, okay.
Bring your own.
Didn't you get a copy of the flyer?
Yes, I I just, yes, I did. I looked at it when I got it, but I didn't print it. I'll print it.
Okay, yeah, it does, it. Um, the other thing that needs to be re-redone is the letterboxing. Those boxes, some of them are just full of water, some of the the stamp pads aren't available, you know.
Oh, yeah.
True, and look at, look at those and try to get it all squared away, because it.
Maybe we could do, we could do that when we go down there, Philippa.
One of the, one of the working days, we could do it, yeah.
Or when we meet up with.
Or when we meet up, okay.
Yeah, we'll do that, okay.
Okay, um, and then the other thought I just think we need is maybe some hand sanitizer, paper towels. Spray for the tables to keep them clean, just the things that we need to think about, you know, to keep.
Right.
Everything.
Bring some, bring some extra masks.
Yeah.
Do you know, I went, I went in the store today and you would think after a year. I went in the store and I was walking through the store and people were looking over at me. I didn't think anything of it, I'm just walking, walking, and then all of a sudden I said. Oh my God, I didn't have on a mask. And I had to go running out of the store and go back to, I think. How can you not remember? But it's so freeing when you have them off in your vehicle, that then you get out. But I could see people looking at me. I thought, do I have something off my face? I mean, what am I doing here? Um, so we need to have some extra masks.
Mixing off is a good idea, yeah. Um, Jean Pillow said she would come and talk about the rain garden, right?
Yep.
Because I still have some signs, those long signs that Jean um, gave me that had been made up for the rain garden, and so. If she could come to one of these workdays, she could put those signs.
Signs.
In, which would be really helpful.
All right, we'll ask her specifically.
Ask us, wish, and with one of those dates, okay, great. Um. And Linda is gonna come and do the shade garden?
In a perfect world. So the dates we picked are, I just, because I'm gonna send these to her, May eighth, May fifth, May nineteenth. And April twenty-eighth.
April twenty.
Ten, ten to twelve, I mean, yeah, ten to twelve, except for the Saturday, nine to twelve.
I don't think we picked May the fifth. I thought we we picked maybe the Saturday instead of the Wednesday. We were gonna do the fifth and then we switched to a Saturday.
The eighth? Oh, I thought it was in addition to it, no?
Um, we can.
Yeah, I think we should.
Okay.
Especially if that, one of those days doesn't pan out, we might be kicking ourselves.
We're talking ten to twelve on the fifth. Nine to twelve on the eighth, ten to twelve on the nineteenth, and ten to twelve on the twenty-eighth.
You got it.
Got it, okay, good. Okay, um.
I can only stay till seven, so, but.
Um, so Jessie, I know you can't be there, because your daughter is gonna be doing wonderful.
Terrible timing.
That's all right, that's okay. Um. I talked with Kit, he will open the bathroom for us. So I have to remind him a bit sooner that he will have the bathroom open and that will be done. Um, I do think we're going to need, I counted up. Ten people to run this. That puts two people directing the parking, because if, if lots of people arrive at the same time and the parking fills up. Somebody may need to send them up to the congregational church to park along that road there. Um. I, we have no idea what numbers we're talking about. Do we need to ask for, for a town constable or do we not? I don't know. I mean, maybe the Lions Club has somebody who is big and burly and can direct parking for us, you know? Um.
I don't know.
Who takes, who gets people's names as they come in and hands them that, that map that you're talking about that we need to develop, Andy.
Yeah.
And also not only takes their name, but their email.
Yeah.
We want to thank them for coming and also it's going to be there to take potential donations. So that has to be an adult, a garden club member or one of us has to be able to sit at that table for at least part of the time.
Yeah, can we, can we have a donation box so that?
Yeah, donation box with maybe envelopes in it.
You know, so it's can be kind of not in their face.
Absolutely, but it also has to be, nobody can walk away with.
Yeah, yeah, that's true.
You know, so I mean, it, it, we can have a donation box, but somebody has to be watching that donation box. So that table has to be there.
Yeah, I think we need to have, uh, get people's addresses also for that fundraising letter.
They can, you know, we can have a pad of paper where they can write, you know, we can have a notebook and they can just write it in.
Write their name, their email and then the mailing address. Absolutely. Yes.
Yeah, okay.
The, the, the tree walks, what we could have is like, I don't know if you, what you, what you're wanting to do, anybody want to do birds or trees? And whether Chad can be there, I'm not sure. But maybe one person does the first part of the trees going down and then somebody else does the other part coming back and, and they just keep flowing.
Yeah.
Um. What with the artist supplies that Elaine said we needed, is she going to get those or do we have to buy those?
She will.
I think they would be bringing their own things.
They'll bring their, they'll bring their own and I'll, I'll ask her, but if she, I doubt she's going to need anything.
Okay. Um, as far as the paint, the, the, the feeding, the bird feeders, do you want to use permanent markers or do you want to use paints?
We could look, um, I don't know what you were looking at, Andy, if you already had an idea picked out, but we could kind of, I could kind of look and see what some of the ideas were and then we can decide what's going to be the less.
I think it would be fun if we got paint.
Yeah.
You know.
It's going to be less expensive.
At Michael's, get the things and. You know, we can look at prices, but it, it will look nice if the kids use a brush and, you know, it's nicer than scribbling with a marker, but.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, take a look at those and tell me what you think. You know, some were cool. They had sticks glued on coming out of the top. I mean, we can be as fancy or not fancy as we want, but we'll need to get a dowel, we'll need to get some bird seed. I can do that.
Um, will you, will you do that, Andy? Will you take care of dowels?
Yeah.
Or whoever goes to Michael's takes care of dowels.
Mm hmm.
Where do one, where does one get a dowel?
Oh, at, um, Home Depot.
Okay. I just want everybody to know what they're doing here. Who, who wants?
You know, I like, I like shopping small, so I might go up to Eastford Hardware.
Okay.
Yeah, they just, they sell dowels by the feet, you know, as thin or as thick as you want them.
Right.
I've lived in many a home where the windows had to be held open with a dowel.
Yeah, same here.
So I know all about that stuff.
Yep.
Okay, so we have somebody, somebody will be at the rain garden and somebody will be at the shade garden. And a couple of people will be doing tree walks and birding, Aaron's doing birding. But we do need those adults to direct parking and to have somebody at that rate. So when people arrive, there's somebody handing out. You know.
You know, that would be, that would be awesome if we can get some men from the Lions Club to do that or women.
I'll ask about that and see. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we're probably just giving them a little.
And also.
We've got men in the garden club and that they might, the man who does the newsletter and then John Davis. You know, if, if they can come that day, that's the kind of thing that they might like to do because they're less familiar with the. Although John has worked at the arboretum with us, that might be something that's, that's really good.
Yeah, but we probably only need two for that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know whether we're going to be getting two cars arriving at a time. Forty cars arriving.
It's hard to say.
Yeah, you can never tell.
People might come early with a picnic too.
Mm hmm.
You know.
And if anyone, like any of, um, anyone related that's helping us that wants to park, you know, in my drive. Or like all, any of all of you, if you want to park in my driveway so that you don't have to worry about, you know.
Oh, thanks.
Oh, that's a good idea. Oh, thanks. Yeah.
I don't know if I have enough room for all the, the garden club, but like if Aaron wanted to and Elaine wants to park, you know, they.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Cause I won't, I won't be there, so I'll be with the recital, so I should be able to. You know, help out. I mean, leave the area.
That's great.
Fantastic. We need to have some photographs. Don't we?
Well, Aaron's, Aaron's a photographer. He's an awesome. He will. He's an awesome, awesome photographer.
As long as people give permission to be included in the pictures, it would be really nice to put on our website.
I mean, I can take some and I, is, if Sarah's going to be there, we can take it with our phone.
Okay.
Yeah, plenty of pictures with our phones.
That's fine. We just have to make sure that people, we know that they say we can do this.
Right. Yeah, it would be really nice to get some kids in the pictures.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we get to have the kids' parents, parents have to give them to do that. Um. What have I not thought of?
I think we just, what day, like, when are we, what time or when are we setting up? Um, like, is there anything, materials that would need to get there before, um, Saturday?
Yes.
One of the other things we had talked about is having, uh, plants.
Oh, yeah, I've got those.
Primrose.
Woody Dan and Howard is donating the primulas, as many as we want.
Really?
From his garden and have them there. He's also going to donate some day lilies to go on Jessie's bank.
Oh, my God, that's awesome.
Oh, yeah, I'd forgotten about that. So we need some trowels though, for the kids to plant with.
Oh, my list, my list is getting very long. I'm writing these notes as I'm running out of space. Okay.
Sure you put, um, masking tape or something around your trowels, Andy, some color so you know.
I will.
Not in the garden, I mean, we have some at the arboretum. Um.
So you think just people can, but, you know, bring their own and for the, for the, for the day? Or are you thinking about buying some?
No, I didn't. Oh, the plants or the, the trowels?
The trowels.
Between us, we've got enough trowels.
Well, yeah, we'll have enough.
Three at my house and, and there's three or four at, in the little shed.
And I have a few, so yeah, we'll be good. And if all else fails, we'll use a shovel. Okay.
There you go.
You know, that'll be fun.
I don't know if people want to, you know, wipe them off before they're using them. I don't know if people are going to be, you know, some people are more relaxed about.
Well, if. You have sanitizing, sanitizing cloths there, we can, you know.
And we'll get, you know, we'll get out all the gloves too.
Great idea. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, my God, we got a lot. Oh, my goodness. Is there anything we can do now? I like getting things done in advance.
Um, I went and visited the place and we've got, that those crocus that we planted, um, you know, on the bank.
Yeah.
Had time coming up. That, that was not a very successful planting, unfortunately. However, the gloves that we planted on Jessie's bank are coming through nicely right now.
Yes, they're good.
They're looking good.
Good.
Yeah, this.
Around the parking lot are looking good right now.
Yeah.
Good.
I have to go, but, um, I can, you know, if you, if you do anything more, you know, you can assign me something, you know? But we can figure out from Sarah where to pick up the flyers and I will look into the bird feeders also.
Right.
Yeah, check that. Yeah, check those out. If you just want to send me a text or something, if you see something that you really like. Tell me where you found it and I'll, and I'll look at it.
Yeah, that way we can, you know, tag team on the supplies for that.
Okay.
You want half gallons as well as full gallons?
I guess the plastic.
Yeah.
The half gallon cider containers, half gallon milk container.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Probably the half gallon because they, that, you know, they're not going to have a lot of time. It's, you know, they're just going to do, if they want to do a lot of things. They don't want to take, spend forever painting one.
Yeah, see, I, yeah, okay. I can switch to half, I just always buy gallons, but I can switch to half.
I did too. So I was just wondering whether we wanted a mixture of, of half and full gallons.
Yeah, no, we could have a mixture.
Okay, great.
Okay. All right, well, I will, I will see you. I'll be in touch.
Hi, Jessie.
Okay, thanks a lot.
We're dropping like flies.
Sounds familiar, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Um.
So we didn't get to really resolve anything with Sarah, but.
You said she was going to come back and join us. I'm not sure what time her meeting was going to end though.
Yeah.
So I maybe have to text her. Um, what have we?
I think, are we going to have our regular next meeting and then we might need to have another special one in between?
We have our regular next meeting, yes, because we.
Okay.
Do that. Um. And maybe we'll have met with Jay before that regular next meeting perhaps.
Oh, that would, that would be nice.
Mm hmm. Um. Anything that I've not thought about that we've not discussed, we've talked about publicity, we've talked about supplies, we've talked about activities. We've talked about roles for people. We've talked about who's going to help. We talked about work dates.
The bathrooms, we did work dates. I'm just going over, going over my list here. I.
And we've got people, you, you, have you written down, Andy, what you were going to do?
Yes, that we discussed tonight.
Right.
Yes.
Okay. So you will bring it, and I will bring two tables and chairs. Um. I have a notebook that we can use and I'll draw up lines to say name, email, address.
Okay.
For the donation, we need a money box, a cash box, right?
Be nice if we had a nice looking wooden box of some type.
Hmm, with, with maybe a, 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 a mailing. Like a mailbox thing that they just put it into the slot.
Yeah, trying to think what I. We can make one. You know, we can, we can make one out of a cardboard box with a slit and make it look nice.
Okay. Um, but it, it needs to somehow not be. It needs to be very conspicuous so nobody can walk away with it and people can't be, shouldn't be able to get into it. So it should be sealed with a mailing.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, let's put our heads together on that one and come up with something. I, I'll ask, uh, John Davis from the garden club because they use a lot of money boxes for their plant sale.
Mm hmm.
You know, if he has something we could use.
Yeah, because I mean, we're not looking for, for dollar bills or like you would at a plant sale. We're really looking for, for checks, aren't we? Or do you think people might put in a $10 bill?
I don't think, I don't think people will come with a check. I don't think that's.
Okay.
Man, we'll be lucky if people come with money, you know, just cash. But, um, you know, we'll take whatever we can get. But I think if I went to something like that, I wouldn't have a check, a check with me necessarily. I'd leave my pocketbook in the car and.
Yeah, okay. And we really, we're, we're advertising it as a free thing, so I, I don't want to push the donation box. I think it's just nice to have it there if somebody feels like it.
Yeah, something that we print, it might say, we might put something on there like donations. Payable to. You know, friends of the arboretum, town hall.
Yeah, because I mean, if you remember that, that couple who donated for the bank, they just came for the walk and, and, you know.
And then con- and then contacted us.
Donation. My, my thought was that that's might maybe is what we would see is that people come and they, they had a good day and they want to mail a donation.
Yeah, that's why I think the fundraising letter needs to go out shortly thereafter.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't mean two weeks, but you know, a month or so after.
I would agree. Yeah, okay. Let's, let's think, we can, we can, we've got time to think about that.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm.
We need to make a list of things we're going to think about too.
Lists, my life is full of lists right now.
Me too.
Okay, um. It, is there a community calendar? Does, what, what newspaper carries a community calendar? Does the, um.
Nothing I get.
Is the Villager?
Yeah, I don't get, I don't get that, but maybe, I don't know.
Let me see what, what I can find out about. I'll do the LGV. And. Call Gary O about Winnie.
Oh, my God.
You can get all gussied up.
Yeah, yeah, there, there you go.
Um.
For the radio.
You can come in our jammies.
Oh, my God.
Um.
Oh, I talked to Jean. She said she might come that day.
Oh, good.
Maybe I'll tie her down to do something. Come, let's get, put you to work. Oh, someone, someone needs to be in touch with Jean Pillow also.
Okay.
I'll make sure.
You want to do that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll contact her.
Great, thank you. Yeah, tell her that we've got these signs, but we're not quite sure what they, where they go, but they're supposed to be the rain garden signs.
Okay, and then we can say if, if something's missing or anything like that to let us get one.
Right. Um.
Oh, my. Okay.
Okay.
You know, I really like Elaine's idea, but I just, she kind of caught me off guard because I didn't know she was going to say that. You know, tonight, that we had talked about it, but that wasn't what I had envisioned. You know, from my initial conversations with her, but whatever it is, she will make it work. She's, she's just awesome. In fact, I want to show you. I, in the house up in Maine, I have a room, you know, it was built in eighteen sixty, so it's really old. The, one of the rooms, there used to be a, um, something, a stove. You know, it was, there's a hearth in the mantle, but whatever was in there, cook stove is long gone. So I have this opening and the man who's doing the work in the, in this room. He was trying to come up with something to put in this opening. So I, I visited my friend, um, Chris Waldron's house. She has a very old house here in Woodstock and I walked in. And I just, she, I just went in to pick something up and I glanced over and she had this painted board in the old fireplace. So I asked Elaine if she would paint one for me. Now, she gets commissioned to do all these things. And I thought she might say, I don't know, you know? But we came up with a price that we both agreed on and I went to her house and I showed her pictures of the little house. It's a cape. And the, the river and the, and then she is so creative. I just picked it up yesterday. I'll, I'll hold it up here so you can see it.
I'd love to see it.
It's big. It's, um, four feet by three feet. So it's, it's big. But I'll get it. Hold on. I put it in a spot where you know who can't get to it. So I get it up to Maine, but, um. I don't know if you'll be able to see all of it, but she's so creative how she put all the things together that I told her about. And came up with this. Can you see it? Oh, you can see it.
Yeah, that's beautiful, Andy. I can see it all.
Oh, it's absolutely unbelievable.
Oh, lovely.
I told her there is a cemetery, so she put a little cemetery.
Now, is, is, is your house that close to the sea?
Well, no, yes and no.
Okay.
You can't see it from the house.
Right.
The river behind the house that you have to walk to, but she wanted to integrate everything into it. So she put the lighthouse. Because originally it was going to be a lighthouse and then she saw pictures of the little house that has this funky tree.
Mm hmm.
And then the birch and the spruce behind it. So she just put everything in it.
That's terrific.
I know.
Oh, that's awesome.
She's so creative how she pulled it all together. It's kind of primitive, early Americana kind of painting. It's really nice.
That certainly is. I think that, I think that would be a wonderful thing to do for next year. That certainly is. I think that, I think that would be a wonderful thing to do for next year.
I do too.
And maybe to have, we will target as, I mean, the fundraising, we need, we need, it looked like it was two thousand five hundred dollars. Two thousand four hundred dollars we would need for a six by eight foot.
Oh, 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 okay.
So that, that's, that's a chunk of change, you know, but we're also having to fundraise to take care of trees and fundraise to do other stuff. You know, that's, we, we might, I don't know.
We might be able to get like a hometown bank or bank hometown, whatever they go by. You know, to sponsor it and then have their name on it, or even someone like, um. Like the Apple Orchard, you know, one of those places or Woodstock Inn.
Right, but I think, I think that it needs, that needs some, some talking up.
Yeah.
We need to get maybe some sketches of what it would look like. We need to make sure that the Historical Association, Historical District. Will not protest. You know, look at how difficult we had putting our signs up.
Oh, yeah, oh, I know, oh, you know how I feel about.
Have it on the road, we'd have it back where the Arboretum is, but where, where would it enhance the Arboretum best?
I think, you know, she talked about graffiti. I think if it's up near the parking lot, we might be asking for trouble. But if it's down in the Arboretum, how cool would that be? To have a spot down there where it's, oh, I, I think it would be, and she said it would. She mentioned other states where they were, but she said, you know, they're not that common, so we would be like the first town that had one of these permanent. Murals.
And, and it came, came up with the idea at our last meeting to have, to invite the academy to create some sculptures. So.
Oh, I like, oh, really? I don't remember that.
The Arboretum, not permanent sculptures necessarily, but a sculpture exhibit.
Oh, that would be wonderful.
Works, so something like this added to sculptures. I mean, we could really have a lot of things happening in the Arboretum. That, that attract people to come to it.
Maybe even that the academy would sponsor it. I don't know anything about that, but maybe, you know, if their kids were able to be the ones who painted it.
If they did the painting, maybe, but that's, that's a lot of money and, and they've got a big fun, you know, financial campaign going right now. Just starting up for the, the academy building. But I'm sure we'll find, can find a sponsor, but I don't think we can do it by May the twenty second.
No, I don't either.
So that, that's.
You know, I didn't wanna dampen her enthusiasm because she really did kinda catch me off guard. But that's why I brought up about the Plan B.
I think Plan B is good.
Cuz she will make it work.
Yeah, great.
You know, when you're down in Plutnum, look around, uh, like all of those stores have her paintings in them. And all those barrels, that's all her artwork. She's, she's just really talented and she loves doing it.
And she's very enthusiastic, so it's really.
Oh, yeah, way very enthusiastic, so.
And so is Aaron. Aaron is quietly brilliant at identifying.
Isn't he adorable? I really like him.
Are we all set then?
I guess Sarah's not coming back, so I guess we're good.
So I will contact Sarah and find out a time when the three of us can get together and I'll let you know.
Yeah, make it, make it easy on her because, you know, I have a lot of flexibility.
Um, and you're gonna get together with Aaron.
Yep.
Work out the birding stuff, okay, and keep your eyes open while you're down there as to where this bat, this sign could look best.
Where the what?
Where this painting is next year.
Oh, yeah, oh, I know, that'll be fun to try to come up with this.
Year will go, you know?
Yeah. Cuz if that happened, that would be a real focal point.
Wouldn't it be great?
Be wonderful, yeah.
Okay.
All right, and then, uh, sooner or later, we have to contact Chad to see if he'll be able to help on that day. I, I know that's for him.
I'll, I'll, I'll ask him, he's very busy, but I will ask him. Um, he has said he definitely is gonna take care of the trees. And he's definitely gonna talk to Bill Rathbone about doing the pruning and stuff, that other stuff. Um, that wasn't on our agenda, so we shouldn't be talking about it.
No, no, but you know, be, it would be wonderful cuz it, the couple of times I've seen him down there talking about the trees. You know, he's, he's the guy.
Yeah, absolutely. I will ask him. Okay, I think we're all set.
Thanks, Philippa, thank you, Crystal.
Thank you very much, Crystal, I appreciated your input.
You're welcome, have a good night.
And you too, bye bye.
Bye.